Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, guests, staff, council. Thank you for being present at our council meeting this afternoon. A call to order at 5:30 PM. Would you please do roll call?
Mayor Rodham.
Here.
Mayor Protim Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy. Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes. Councilmember Melton.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the pledge, followed by the invocation led by our Chief of Police, Jay Metters.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Metters.
Heavenly Father, as we progress through the month of September, we offer our gratitude for the gift of life and the changing seasons. We ask that you will guide our steps, calm our worries, and strengthen our hearts with courage and faith for the days ahead. Fill our community and our homes with love and our spirits with hope. May September be a month of growth, blessings, and a deeper understanding of how you would have us to live as a community. Bless our first responders, the students, teachers, staff, and administrators of the Rockdale ISD, and all of our citizens. Bless this evening tonight, guide our thoughts and our discussions, and may all that is done here this evening be pleasing in your sight. Amen.
Thanks, Chief Metters. Citizens Communications, have anyone signed up for Citizens Communications?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here that wasn't aware of the process that would like to sign up for Citizen Communications? Jay, you signing up? Oh.
Sign it out.
Sign it out.
Page out.
Moving on to the proclamation. This is Library Card signup month, and we have our staff, the director and our staff from the library here. Would you like to come up and join me while I read this proclamation? Y'all come on up here, please. How are you? Doing well, thank you.
Mayor, this is Olivia Fiu.
I, Ward Rodham, nice to meet you.
This is Elizabeth Halli.
Nice to meet you.
And you, Omi, Liz Ray.
Yes, I do. Thank you for being present.
Thank you.
And I just have to say, and I think if you follow social media, if you have young children, or if you visit our library, we have phenomenal things going on in our city library, and I'm so proud of this group for the work that they're carrying on, for the new initiatives that they implemented at our public library. It's just so exciting to see the things that we have going on in our public library, and I know and I feel confident that I can say our citizens echo that as well. So, thank you for your hard work. I sincerely appreciate it as your mayor.
We love Rockdale.
Wonderful. So, our proclamation reads, "Whereas libraries are foundational to education, imagination, and opportunity, offering everything from early literacy programs to digital tools that support lifelong learning and personal growth; whereas libraries curate collections and design programs that reflect the diversity of the population they serve, ensuring equitable access to information, technology, and culture of all; whereas libraries contribute to thriving local economies by equipping job seekers, entrepreneurs, students, and creators with tools and training to succeed; whereas library resources help households save money, reduce waste, and make sustainable choices all through the simple power of shared public good; whereas the Library Card opens doors to endless possibilities, from books and technology to lifelong learning and imagination. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Ward Rodham, Mayor of the City of Rockdale, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Library Card signup month in Rockdale, Texas, and encourage all of our residents to sign up for our Library Card and explore the endless possibilities it offers." Would you like to say anything?
Yes, sir. This year's theme is one card, one endless possibilities. It's a reminder that libraries are for everyone, no matter your age, your background, or your goals. A library is your starting point, whether you're exploring a new hobby, whether you're looking for your next favorite book, sharpening your tech skills, which our ladies are wonderful, and giving tech assistance to all of our patrons, and helping your children succeed at school. So, please, we invite you to come to the library and get a Library Card if you don't have one, and if you do have one and you haven't been in a while, come read your card with us and come see it and check out all the new programs that we have going on at the library. Today is also another great day for, it is International Library Literacy Day, which promoting literacy in the digital era, which shines light on how technology is changing the way we learn, work, and socialize in our communities today. And it's by digital literacy is just as essential as reading and writing. The last thing I do want to mention is a library that received their accreditation, darn accredited library, with the state library for the next fiscal year of 2026. It allows us to participate into the interlibrary loan, the Tech Share cards, and the Tech Share database, e-read, which is very popular with our library, which allows us to have boundless with our ebooks and audiobooks, which many of our patrons use, and our summer reading program supplies. So, thank you so much. We have outreach going out at different locations, we've already done them at junior high school, and we're next week, we're going to be at the elementary school, and we are going to do outreach at the Rockdale Estates and Rehab, and then we also have some other locations. So, if you see us around in Melton Town and you haven't got a Library Card, come sign up with us, or come see us at the library.
Council, I'll pass it to you, and I guess Stan, get these ladies and will those over.
Thank you, sir.
Let me get some of all y'all looking at the camera.
Wait, wait, let's get the arrow on.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sounds good.
You good?
Yeah. Don't know.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, council, you've had an opportunity to look at the council package, meeting package today. Is there anything in the consent agenda you have questions, comments about, or would prefer to move out to the regular agenda for more information? Being none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we vote, all in favor said, motion signify, or raise your right hand. Motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda. Council, I'm going to make a change. I'm going to take regular agenda item 10 and move it up to the top of the agenda, which is considered taking any necessary action requests from the East Bell Tap House for funding for the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund for the Rocktoberfest on October 5th. A young family has a sick child at home, and I think they need the opportunity to go ahead and go first. If you would, approach the podium, please.
Mayor, this is a request for hot funds for the Rocktoberfest in the amount of $13,750. This is the third year for Rocktoberfest, and I think each year has been successful up to this point. In the application that they submitted, they are estimating 700 to 1,000 people for the event, with 70 to 150 people staying overnight, and that estimate does justify the amount of the request. It is up from last year, which they had requested $10,000 in the past, and they will be required to turn in the hotel documentation, and then their actual, if it's approved tonight, their reimbursement for the hot fund request would be dependent upon them successfully turning that information in.
So, you're doing this as a reimbursement for a portion of it?
Yes, and that was one of the, in the changes that we had made, hot fund grant are awarded based on our reimbursement grant.
Before we move any further, I want to make it clear that during the vote of this, if I'm required to vote, I will be abstaining from any voting in this agenda item.
Hopefully, it's not a tie.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you, thank you, Tim, for that great announcement for Rocktoberfest. We're very excited, and I'm happy to be here today. My name is Cassie Born Call. I'm one of the owners, along with my husband Cory here today, requesting hot funding support for our third annual Rocktoberfest, which is a growing community festival held right here in Rockdale, as you know. And our goal is to continue to develop this event into a signature attraction that brings visitors, supports local businesses, and enhances our cultural life in Rockdale. Last year, we welcomed around 900 to 1,000 guests, many of whom traveled outside the area, and with your support, we plan to expand our marketing efforts, improving overall guest experience, and attract even more out-of-town visitors. We've really leveled up our music headliners this year and really trying to make that a big focus that will pull these people out of Austin, College Station, Temple, to really bring them here to stay overnight with us and spend the weekend with us, since this is a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday event. We believe Rocktoberfest greatly aligns with the purpose of hot funds by promoting this tourism, helping position Rockdale as a vibrant destination in central Texas. And thank you for your time, and I thank you for your consideration. Open for any questions that you may have.
Have, if this is third year in a row, we've gotten responses back that they asked for in the past?
Yes, it's been successful in the past. I think this is the first year that they are required to turn the forms in from the hotels.
That's correct, yes.
Hotels have been very cooperative with that, so.
Councilmember Willie, do you have a question? Council, any other questions?
For Chief Metters, if you get that kind of turnout, I know we've always been concerned about that intersection, and we put up bigger stop signs and whatnot, but I don't know how much that is still an issue and a concern, and I know sometimes it seems like our parking might partially obscure some of the stop signs. Is there a need?
And I'll add to that. So, in the past, we've had all of our vendors outside of our lawn, which is our main parking population. This year, we're bringing all the vendors inside, under our awning. That way, the full parking lot that we have at the Tap House will be for parking to minimize street parking and maybe limit those distractions to the stop signs.
We'll still have the road closure, but most of the setups for all the vendors will be in the road, so.
One thing that hasn't been mentioned is the date. It is actually the first, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Third, fourth, and fifth.
Third, fourth, and fifth.
The biggest event being on that fourth, that Saturday, where we anticipate the most guests.
Council, any other questions?
I have a question. If somebody wants to be a vendor, are all vendors welcome?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. We've got it promoted on social media right now, so anybody that wants to sign up as a vendor, they just need to go to our Facebook, and there'll be a link there that leads to our website, and then they can sign up from there, so.
Any other questions, council? Comments? Entertained action on this agenda item?
Well, thank y'all again for investing in our community. I can't thank y'all enough that you're really fighting up the east side and our downtown, so thank y'all for sticking with it. I know it's probably slow at the beginning, but thank y'all for sticking with it.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, if that's okay. I go ahead and move that we accept the staff's recommendation to approve the hot fund request of 13,750, up to, I'm sorry, up to the request of 13,750 for the East Bell Tap House for the Rocktoberfest.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we vote, all in favor said, motion signify, or raise your right hand. Motion passes. Congratulations, thank you for continued activities in our community.
Thank you, look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to hearing your report in a huddle.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, jumping back up to agenda item number seven on your regular agenda, council, conduct a public hearing and take necessary action on a potential right-of-way abandonment for an alley located within 800 block of San Gabriel. I will officially open up this public hearing at 5:44 PM. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regards to this public hearing? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in regard to this public hearing? Ben, take it from here, my friend. I'm going to keep the public hearing open until Ben finishes.
Okay, I'll just make it brief. Staff received a request to abandon this alley. We have put in 811 locates to locate any potential utilities within this alley. None are within the alley that located their lines. Our utilities are not in this alley, so it is a clean alley as far as the city's concerned. And I've ran some numbers, I've put in some calls to some appraisers, but I haven't received a call back. So, what I did was I took the appraisal district's numbers of what property value is for just the land without a home on it in this area, and what the mode came out to was about $2.40 per square foot. So, if you choose to abandon the alley tonight, you do not have to, but if you choose to, you need to set the value of which you're going to abandon that at, so that way the applicants will know what to purchase their fair share of that alley would be.
So, how does this work, Ben?
Is there anyone that wants to speak in regards to the public hearing, or in regard to what Ben commented on for this public hearing? Being none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:45 PM. Go ahead, Councilmember Perry.
If somebody doesn't want to buy the piece behind their property, is it available to somebody else?
It would. So, what would happen is the steps is we receive the request. If you guys decide to abandon that alley, then the people that abut the alley will get another notice. They've already received a notice that we're potentially abandoning this tonight. They'll receive another notice that will give a deadline to decide if they want to purchase their fair share of that alley, and if so, they'll have to pay a certain portion of the surveying cost that it will take to actually survey this alley out and attach it to their properties. Then, after that deadline, it is open to whomever else abuts this alley to purchase that portion. The requister that requested this alley would purchase the whole thing if nobody else wants to purchase their fair share.
Who did the only, who did the request come from?
The requister was from the property on the south corner on San Gabriel, is the Gonzalez family, that requested us to abandon the alley.
How many residents does our, along that block?
I sent out five notices.
So, do we open this up, like if I want to buy a Coulter Street next to my house? Can I do that? Like, are we opening up a can of worms with this?
Well, we've done this before. We have, we did it for the church on Rice Street. They had an alley that ran between their property that they requested that to be abandoned, as well as an alley on Cameron and Travis Street.
So, in this situation, when the area was originally platted, the alleys were platted, oftentimes they're not developed. If the city gets a request to abandon an alley, we'll look and see, first of all, is the alley serving a public good, a top public, important public purpose? If it's not, then we would bring it to the council for consideration. If there are utilities that run down the alley that we need to maintain from a right-of-way standpoint, that's going to be a factor in our recommendation whether or not to abandon it.
It's my understanding that some of the past practice of the city has, you feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, some of the past practice of the city has only been to abandon these alleyways when it came from a request of either replat or purchase of some property in that area.
So, the two that you're making reference to is the church over here, where they own both sides of the alley already, and this allowed them to be able to build across that, to connect their property with the actual structures. And the other one is this one right up here behind.
That's right, and that was because of a purchase of that, or a potential purchase of that, so there was a request.
So, I personally don't feel like we should be abandoning alleys. If we ever need that for a utility corridor for whatever reason, there's no getting it back. And if property owner number 205 there, 2005, whatever that number is there, currently has access to the back of their property, but doesn't have the means to buy any of this, they just lost a access to their property that was there when they bought it. So, they had access to the front and the back, and that's if they can't afford, well, actually, the guy in the middle loses out no matter what. So, I don't, I don't, I don't like it.
I have the same concern. I wanted to understand the rationale behind the request, like what's their plan there?
The requister wanted additional land, is as simple as it gets. They wanted additional property, and so they requested, to increase their backyard size.
So, you said you sent out five letters. Do all five, all five people have to agree?
So, they get a deadline. So, if you guys abandon it, they get a deadline to purchase their fair share of that alley. If they do not, then it can be purchased by one individual for the remaining of whatever's not purchased by their fair share.
And so, how does that work? What if number 2005 there doesn't want it, but 2000, the one above him and the one beside him both want his, how do we decide who gets that?
It would be done on the plat. It would depend how you'd want to break that. It would depend who wants to buy it. It could get, you could get some really weirdly shaped lots in there. Could be a potential of that, yes.
I'm afraid that a decision to proceed with this tonight could put council in jeopardy years from now down the road if issues came up with these adjacent residents that had property that backed up to that alley. I'm just highly concerned about this request, and I just, without, I don't like the request either.
I think with both two things we're facing, it's not a good time to start giving up property either, any kind of property like that, that we may need in the future.
Why did this recommend, and not throwing darts here, I just want to understand, what was the purpose this recommendation coming about, or this agenda item coming about?
So, this is a council determination, this is why it became before you tonight. Since there are no utilities in it, I don't have the authority to tell them no.
Understand.
It would come to council, and you would make that determination.
Thank you for clarification.
I'm just curious, and maybe we don't know at this point, what would the person be responsible for to buy their portion, if they're all equal?
As far as the price of that?
Yes.
I didn't divide that number out. I did give you the total of what it would roughly be, which is a little under $11,300 for the whole alley, so if you divide that by five, it would be their equal share. Now, equal share is different for each one, because their properties are different sizes.
It just came forward specifically because there was a request from an adjacent property owner, and we did not have any infrastructure in that alley. So, but I mean, it doesn't necessarily set precedence, but it does, it does in a way, so.
Ward, would there be times where our fire department needs to access these alleys?
Oh, absolutely. Positively, that's a very good thought, Councilmember Melton.
Is the alley passable currently, or is it overgrown?
It is overgrown, and there's actually an obstruction in the alley that needs to be removed, that code enforcement sidelined since we've received this request, but if you do not move forward with the banning of the alley, then it will be cleared.
Council, any other questions regarding this agenda item?
I'll make a motion that we do not agree to the abandonment of the alley on San Gabriel Street and leave it as it sits currently.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
With motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we vote, all in favor said, motion signify, or raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you, Ben. Might as well stay there. At 5:53 PM, I'm opening a second public hearing to take any necessary action on a potential right-of-way abandonment of an alley within the 500 block of East Bell. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak during the public hearing phase of this agenda item?
I've been a salesman, you've been, try sell it again.
Being no one present that wishes to speak during the public hearing phase of this agenda item, I am closing the public hearing at 5:54 PM. Go ahead, Ben.
I'll make this brief. Another request. We got two requests at the same time. This is a different family, but it's the same. There's no utilities in this alley. It's a clean alley. I have the mode at 181 per square foot. If you choose to abandon that, if not, you do not have to.
I didn't, there was not a map attached to this one, but just out of curiosity, what is, how do you get a different mode on one alley versus the other?
The properties in that area were valued differently for whatever reason, and so when I, I ran it off that area of everyone that abutted that alley, since I couldn't get a call back from an appraiser, I just, everyone that abutted, I took their property value with no building on it, and just ran those numbers, and they were different for whatever reason.
Total coincidence, we have two of these at one time?
One of them has been several months in the waiting. It took a while to do the 811s on that one, and so we just tied them together since we received another one.
I'll make a motion that we do not agree to the abandonment of the alley on 500 block of East Bell and leave it as it remain, leave it as it currently is.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we vote, all in favor said, motion signify, or raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you, Ben. Oh, you're up for number three. Conduct a public hearing and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council for the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Section 14.02.070 Home Occupations, and Section 14.02.072 A Loud Use Table. I'm now opening this public hearing at 5:56 PM. Is there anyone present who wishes to make comments or speak in regard to this public hearing? Being no one, we will also close this public hearing at 5:56 PM as well. Go ahead, Ben.
Okay, if you guys recall, a few months back, the planning commission made some changes that allowed use table to require home occupations to come get a conditional use permit from the council when they want to operate. Unfortunately, state law was a little bit ahead of us, and they said that you can no longer do that. What they did is they put in a definition for a term called a no-impact home-based business, which essentially means if it's an operation that doesn't increase your traffic, and is not visible from the street and some other bullet points, that it would no longer be required as an impact business, and you can no longer regulate that with any special type of approvals. So, what I did was I amended the ordinance to add that state law into our ordinance with the section, so that way, in the future, folks can understand why we made these changes and what it was tied to, so if the state law were to change, we could then amend our ordinance. And the other requirement that I added was in the off chance that it's not a no-impact home-based business, I have added that into the use table to still require a conditional use permit from the city council.
So, basically, you're wanting to amend the ordinance to reference and comply with state laws, is that correct?
This is complying with state law.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Does it change anything that's already currently operating this way, or is it a message you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, because no-impact home-based business, this almost met all the requirements that we require for a home occupation anyways, so pretty much this amendment, all it does is it just takes away the extra approval process for them to come in and present a plan.
Council, any other questions for Ben regarding this agenda item number?
So, this will come again? This is first reading?
You will have a second reading of it.
Entertain action on the first reading?
I move that we approve line item nine as read.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the floor regarding the first reading of this agenda nine item. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we vote, all in favor said, motion signify, or raise your right hand. Motion passes. We've already completed agenda item number 10 earlier at the start of this regular agenda. We're going to move down to agenda item number 11. Consider taking any necessary action to appoint or reappoint members to the Rockdale Housing Authority for terms expiring in August 2025. Tim?
So, the Rockdale Housing Authority has appointments that expire this year. They have five, five members, three of which have terms that expire this month. Those include Pam King, Shannon Corrady, Shannon Corrady, they have expressed a desire to be reappointed, and then Charles Starr, whose term is expiring, has decided to step down, and they are recommending Charles Miles, who filled out an application and is also up for consideration for a two-year term.
Fantastic.
Charles Starr going out on a regular term?
Charles is going out on, yes, his term expires.
Council, any other questions for Tim?
And so, do we have to reappoint?
I think we would need a motion to reappoint the ones that are wanting to remain on the board, and also if council wishes to appoint Charles Miles to replace Charles Starr. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Charles Miles is present. Charles, did you want to say anything, or?
This is a good.
You have to say something. No, I'm kidding, Charles.
It'd be hard for me to say this, but I'm going to do it.
We have to change half the plot, so it's a better deal.
Make a motion that we take the housing authority's recommendation of reappointing Pam King and Shannon Corrady to another two-year, to another term, and make the appointment of Charles Miles in the replacement of Charles Starr to a two-year term.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
I have a discussion. I think that the city would do well with all the various boards of having some type of, not necessarily a training, but a workshop to welcome people and to lay out expectations, and because I'm troubled sometimes when we have people who serve on boards who are very outspoken and negative about the city. And I think the people on these boards need to be people who are going to look for the positive message and share that, and not tear down city employees, not tear down the mayor or the council members.
But that would be more of a, I agree with you, but that would be more of a board-by-board, a request that we should make of each individual board to have that own training within their own group.
Agreed. I think, Tim, do you know if the housing authority does any type of training for their board members? I don't know.
They are required to take open meetings, act with training, and public information training. That is, as far as I know, the only formal training that we require that they, that they have.
Well, I would hope, and I appreciate your comment, Councilmember Melton, very much, but I would hope if someone volunteers to participate on a board or an organization in the city that their mindset is for the good of the city and the citizens as well, so. Any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item in this motion? Sir?
Could that be something simply come out from the, from the city manager, that it's a request that those trainings take place?
I think he could independently take action on that as city manager.
I will. What I'll do is put together a letter to send out to all the chairmans of the boards to distribute to their membership with our expectations, and I'll probably go over that with Councilman Melton and the mayor before I send that letter out.
I like it.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion before us on the floor.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor said, motion signify, or raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Thank you, Charles. I know your plate is full.
Yes, thank you, Charles.
I appreciate it.
And thanks to Charles Miles, Charles Starr for his work during the past several years on the board as well, and our members that decided to stay on the board. I appreciate everyone's work. Okay, we are on agenda item 12. Consider take any necessary action to appoint or reappoint members to the Rockdale MDD for terms expiring September 2025. I think our expiring terms are John King, Rebecca Lucky, Nathan Bland, and Joyce Dally, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Jim and Tim?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
John King is also expiring?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I just had the three.
On my list, is that correct? So, for the record, the expiring terms are John King, Rebecca Lucky, Nathan Bland, and Joyce Dally. Can you confirm that, please?
Disconfirmed.
Thank you.
I'll also point out, Ms. Lucky's term was an unexpired term. I believe we appointed her to replace Dr. Monzingo a little over a year ago.
Okay.
And both Ms. Lucky and Bob Slowbod, who has since come off, we sent them to Basic Economic Development School.
Jim, do these board members wish to return, be reappointed?
They all do, yes.
Okay.
Have we opened it up for anybody else? I'm a big believer in new bloods, I can sit here pretty quick.
We did not open it up, that's whatever y'all want to do.
How long have some of these people been on the board?
So, that's a good question. Like I said, Ms. Lucky just came on a little over a year ago. I can tell you that Mr. King was here whenever. I can tell you that, uh, Mr. King was here whenever, um, they hired me, so a little over four years ago. Yeah, he was on council whenever they flipped the, the MDD board. I don't remember exactly when, uh, Mr. Bland came on, but that was probably about three years ago, and Joyce also came on about three years ago.
I just realized I had my mic muted. I apologize.
I would be able to say as, as Mr. Perry that, you know, getting new people in sometimes does not hurt. Uh, and, you know, things change, people change. I never think it's bad to open it up.
Well, I would, uh, remind you guys on council, um, whenever we appointed Garrett, Mr. Mustin, what was that, three, four months ago?
We also had another candidate.
A very highly qualified candidate in Mr. Morse.
It would be my wish, as mayor, that before just carte blanche reappointing existing members, that we give potential new members an opportunity to represent our city as a part of this board of directors. That's just my input.
One of the things I will do, uh, prior to the expiration of boards in the future, and I'm not sure what the next round will be, um, is that we will put out a social media release invitation to folks that want to participate, um, so that you have options. Um, I mean, I'm not sure that's, all of our boards actually have different expiration dates, you know, so it's a little bit more challenging than in some cities where they all expire, say, in June after, after a May election, and then, and so it's a little bit easier to do that at that point. But in, in this case, we, it's not a big deal. We can, we can do that.
I, I am on social media, and I feel like I do see it posted, so. Did y'all post this one?
No, we didn't. No, our historic practice has been when there's a vacancy, we post it, and then we'll ask whoever's there if they want to be reappointed. Yeah, that's been our historic practice.
I guess with other boards, I feel like I do see it posted.
Why is there, why is there so many at one time?
Uh, it's, uh, so in the next cycles, you know, we have seven on our board, and so they're broken up into one year, there's four, the other year, there's three.
Everything's a two-year?
Yes, sir.
Does this council have a want here?
I think, um, from what I'm understanding, is that we'd like to have you put it out there to the city and maybe come back next month.
Well, this is a council thing that y'all, that the city does, not necessarily.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, or the city, not you personally.
Correct, yeah.
I misspoke there.
With your input.
With your, right, of course.
Well, um, how does this work? So, uh, if we go out and Mr. Cook is a, is a great candidate, how do, do we decide that he's replacing me, or, or, or Ward, or how does, how does that work?
We go by the point system again?
So if there are four positions up for reappointment, and all four desire to be reappointed, and we get an, and we get two other applications, and it would be up to council to decide the four that will be appointed to fill those positions, whether through reappointment or application.
When do these terms expire?
At the end of September.
At the end of September, so they would likely, but, uh, where's Barbara? If they are, if they, if they don't get reappointed tonight, they will remain in their office until such time as they're replaced, correct?
Correct.
So if you don't make the appointments tonight, it's not like we won't have a board member at the next meeting, or the next two meetings. Or if you did, they decide to take no action, then they would just stay there until such time as they were reappointed. So if you wanted to delay the vote and, and for me to put out a, uh, notice about, you know, to find out if people are interested in serving, I can do that, and then you can take it up at the next meeting if we get applications and decide if you want to reappoint the folks or point people that might apply.
It's not always easy to find people. I know that. I mean, I've seen it come up where you don't have anyone apply, so, you know, but I'll just have to give it a shot to see what happens.
I'll make a motion that the city, uh, that we take no action on this tonight, and that the city advertises for, uh, potential open positions at the MDD board, uh, until the next council meeting.
A motion on the floor, and I want to make sure I understand, or some clarity on your motion, Councilmember Perry. And I'll ask legal, please, if I may, should that motion also include something about the outgoing members of the board re-submit their names for appointment?
They would certainly be able to, yes, sir.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I ha- I have had, normally what I've done in the past also is even if somebody wants to remain on the board, required that they submit another application to stay on the board. I can do that as well.
Is that?
Pretty standard.
It has been where I've been, but it's not across the board.
Councilmember Perry, would it be fair to ask to add that to your motion? Yes, sir, please, if you don't mind. It hasn't received a second. That first motion's gonna die for lack of a second.
I make a motion that, uh, we authorize the city manager to advertise for potential vacant positions on the MDD board, and that anyone that is up for reappointment, uh, reelection would also make an application to be reinstated.
Make for that motion, sir. We have a motion on the floors, there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second on the floors, are there any discussion? Be no vote, all in favor said, motion, signify, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Jim, do you have anything else for us?
Uh, not till, in there. No, sir, we're good.
Thank you.
May Roden, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miles's question?
Certainly.
How did you find out about this?
Uh, one of the board members respected me.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, moving on to agenda item 13. Consider taking any necessary action approving the second reading, second reading, of an ordinance amending the master fee schedule for solid waste utility deposits, new meter installs, and Patterson Civic Center rentals. Tim?
Um, so the, the three areas of, that we're talking about tonight are what we talked about last time. This year, the cost of trash service in Rockdale was greater than the revenues that it generated, um, by about seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, and so we had a shortfall there. Um, trash rates were last increased in March of 2023. Uh, the new proposed rate would increase residential, uh, trash rates to two dollars and sixty-five cents a month from fifteen forty-seven to eighteen twelve. And if you look at the, the sheet that I attached, um, all the cities in the area in regard to where our trash rates are, it doesn't really change our position in regard to where we stand, um, you know, from a residential trash rates. Hearn was the only one that was currently lower than us. Hearn and Taylor would be, Taylor would still be a few cents lower than us, but Caldwell, Thorndale, Cameron, El- Elgin, and Lexington would all be, remain higher. And then from a non-residential trash rate, um, we would remain between Thorndale, right in the middle between Thorndale and Cameron. Still, still competitive, I think. And one of the questions y'all had last, at the last meeting in regard to, um, BVR, their, their contract expires December 31st, 2026, after the, after this fiscal year, um, and we will, we will likely go out probably in March for bids for trash service, you know, to hopefully bring it down, but that would not affect us until 2027, basically. Um, in regard to the Patterson Center, um, Patterson Center is basically rented almost every weekend. I think I counted, and I had Justin do a, a, a report to show what kinds of bookings and when they were booked. We had eighty-five bookings in the last 12 months. Uh, fifty-two of those were on the, the, uh, weekend. Eighteen of those bookings, um, eighteen of those that were not on the weekend were actually for public use, for the election, or for the fair, or for city use. Um, so there were a few during the week, but not a whole lot. Um, and it, and it gets rented for a lot of different, um, events. Uh, family reunions, receptions, um, celebrations of life, birthday parties, quinceañeras, baby showers, wedding, weddings, business meetings, class reunions, and more. Um, and then I also, um, did an analysis of area event venues, and I, and I was really, really surprised. So right now, we charge four hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to rent the Patterson Center on, on a weekend, and and it's half, I think it's half price for a nonprofit, um, and it, and the venue can seat up to four hundred, about four hundred and fifty people. The closest one that was comparable was the Rockdale Fair Association's New Salem Building, which is five hundred dollars, but it only seats about two hundred and fifty. Um, the other one locally, the Rock Night, Night to Columbus Hall, has about seven hundred and fifty capacity, um, but they charge four hundred and fifty dollars plus two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So if you rent it for an eight-hour venue, it's, it's pretty, pretty salty. Um, and then there's some, the, the Caldwell Civic Center is similarly, is also a publicly-run civic center. They have actually three different options, because they have three different parts of their, their civic center. Um, the small, a couple of the small rooms that heat seat thirty and fifty people rent for two hundred and sixty-five or three hundred and fifty-five dollars, um, but their special event room, um, which is two hundred and fifty seating capacity is nine hundred and fifteen, um, and then you can rent the whole facility, and it's like fifteen hundred dollars for the whole facility. And, and then there's some private venues that are just astronomical, uh, from a rent rental standpoint. Hidden Lakes Ranch, I didn't have, that's a, that's a newer venue. It's actually pretty close to Rockdale, and it also is like in the, in the four thousand dollar range to rent. It's really, really expensive. Uh, what I was proposing is to raise the rent, uh, from six, four hundred and fifty dollars to six hundred, um, on weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then lower it, um, a little bit, I think to three, three seventy-five during the week. Um, and we, I, I don't plan to make any changes to, to the idea of providing our nonprofit, local nonprofits, the fifty percent discount, and the council wants to change that as well. Um, utility deposits are proposed to go from a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars, uh, for, um, for residential accounts, and commercial accounts that use two thousand to ten thousand, increase from three thou- three hundred to four hundred. Basically, the, the, the deposit's there to cover us if people walk away without paying their bill, and currently where we're at, that doesn't always, that's not always enough. And then the meter cap fee is being changed, so it just covers our cost.
I'm gonna go back to a concern Councilmember Perry voiced during the first reading of this agenda item last month in regard to the calls for nonprofits. Uh, and I hope and think everyone knows I'm a hundred percent supporter of nonprofits, whatever that nonprofit is. But he voiced a concern about potentially anybody applying for and becoming a nonprofit. So I still have, you still have that same concern, Councilmember Perry?
Uh-huh. Um, it's really easy to find a nonprofit around there. They're everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
To, to hold your event. So I guess one of my questions is, if, if you establish a rate across the board, and a nonprofit wanted to, uh, utilize the, the facility, could they not come and make a, uh, application for, uh, hotel hot funds potentially?
Sure.
And it at least makes them, tell us what's going on, and makes them hold, help, hold them a little bit more accountable than, and it puts that money right back in our own pocket, um, so to speak. And it, it keeps, in my mind, it, it, it just adds a little bit layer of protection, and it does a little bit of, makes them do a little bit of due diligence if they're gonna come and ask for half off or something. Because I just think it's too easy to find, find loopholes around, uh.
And I want to be clear that I didn't raise this question, and I think I can safely speak for Councilmember Perry, that we're not questioning this because we question the validity or the, or the character of any of our nonprofits. It's just a valid concern, in my opinion, that needs to be addressed.
And, and, and you, and you said local nonprofits. Do we decide what's local or what's not local?
Uh, the, the issue with the, the half price for nonprofits is not part of the, um, master fee schedule that we're amending. It's a policy issue, so that's, would be a separate issue. I can bring back to council at the next meeting, um, to remove that, that as a policy.
I have a question regarding the trash pickup. I know you referenced the cha- potential change in cost, but what about to residents who have more than one trash container that is picked up? Would that cost be increased even more based on the number of having more than one trash can per?
Uh, it is.
I think it's an additional ten-dollar fee per can.
Yep, so there is a, there is a increase on the cost of an additional cart. Um, I'm not, what is it cost? I don't, not sure what it is currently.
I think it's ten or fifteen dollars per.
Um, the, the cost, it went up a percentage. All the, all the rates went up a percentage, so it went up the same percentage as the single rate. Um, right now, with the new fees, the additional carts, twelve dollars and sixty-five cents, so.
But based on your comment of the potential additional cost per month for a resident, is that an across-the-board cost, standard cost? Or if I have, Councilmember Perry has one can, and I have eight, is that an additional cost for me as a resident?
So the cost that I, that I compared across the board was for a single cart, once-a-week pickup.
Okay.
And so if there is addition, I mean, there are a lot of different fees that we charge for additional cart.
Yes.
Um, for bulk waste that we, you know, somebody puts out. Um, if you look at the, if you look at the, the schedule, there are a number of residentials, you know, if somebody puts out mattress box spring or additional bulk waste items, it goes up to thirty dollars, um, are primarily the residential costs. Um, but all the commercial costs went up first, by a same percentage. Um, but the commercial cost that I compared was again for the single cart, once-a-week pickup, correct? And comparing that to all the other cities that I looked at.
How do, how do we get, I think you answered this for me last week, or last month, I don't remember what the answer was. How do we get upside down seventy thousand dollars when BVR, BVR, uh, proposed on a per-can basis, per dumpster basis? Do we not implement the right rates, uh, when, when we, when we took on that new contract?
So when we took, when we took, when we took on that contract, we just took on the, the cost of that in, individual cost of individual residential pickup. There is a lot of other costs, like the recycle center at the, uh, at the waste dump, you know, and there are other miscellaneous costs that we get charged for that were not built into the rate. And so when, in last year's budget, or in this current year's budget, we budgeted revenue, our, our estimated revenue was sufficient to cover our costs, but it didn't turn out that way. It was, it was significantly low, below what was estimated on revenue. So what this does is it gets us to be able to cover, with these rate increases, we will, we should hit that targeted estimated revenue to be included in the budget.
Is that a break-even?
It, it does from the standpoint, there's, there's a little bit of extra cost in there for administrative costs, for billing and, and other administrative costs, but it is, it is very little.
What is?
Five percent.
How do you audit something like this to know what they're picking up or what they're not picking up?
I'm not sure. I, you know, you mean not from a cost standpoint, but from a, audit the level of service that they're providing?
No, audit the number of, uh, personal containers.
So I think to answer your question, Councilmember Perry, if, Tim?
Mm-hmm.
So BVR has an established contract to pick up one can, you have one can plus two additional bags set beside the can.
Yes.
If there's anything in addition to that, they either will not pick it up, and there will transit, uh, trigger a phone call to the city, which would an explanation to the resident that that would require additional city services to come pick up that additional.
Item.
Debris, at additional cost, is that correct?
That, that's correct, or, or a resident can request a, an additional can, um, be delivered to their, to their residence, and then they are billed that by the city for that additional can. Whether they set the, you know, there's times when I forget to set my trash out, I still get, I still have to pay for that week that I, you know, forgot, forgot that. Or if I get two cans, and I only need to set one out, I still get charged for two cans.
So we, we can look at the number of cans in our, in our system and say that there's three hundred cans out there, and they're billing us for three hundred cans.
Yes.
We have that.
They bill us based on the number of cans in, that we have in our inventory. There are times when we identify somebody has an extra can that they're not paying for, and we start, we start charging them, um.
So that's my question. So they were providing these extra services, we weren't billing the customers for it?
And we weren't getting charged for it.
When you say extra can.
I just don't see how you get that far behind them.
So in other words, if, if I have, if, if, if I as a resident, I'm, I just bought my house, and there's three cans there, and I'm only paying for one can, I've got three, though, and I occasionally set two out, sometimes I set three out. Um, if the city only has record of me having one can, I only get billed for one can, city only gets charged for one can, and when we discover that they actually have three cans, we'll go pick those two extra cans up, or they'll start paying for those two extra cans.
When you say can, is it the BVR can, or the can I get at Lowe's?
No, the BVR can.
So when you say two bags of trash, does that also include?
What's in the can?
From Lowe's?
No.
No, so right now, no, they no longer, uh, BVR, when I, when I first came here, I used to be able to set out my BVR can.
Right.
And then occasionally, I would have landscape clippings or whatever, that I would put in an extra trash can that we had there, and I'd set that out, and they'd pick that up. They stopped, they won't pick up those extra cans anymore. They will pick up your can plus two e- up to two extra bags of, of, of waste.
So what I hate, what I hate about that is the bags around my place, when they get put out, inevitably get torn up by a dog, and there's stuff up and down the street that doesn't get picked up. I don't, I don't understand why they, they, you know, I put those same two bags in a can, and they're not gonna take it. But if I put them out as a loose bag, they will take it, and will hope that the cats or the dogs don't tear into it.
What happens is.
And that's, that was, that was the terms of the contract that the city entered into, that they would pick up the can plus two extra bags.
Yes.
Wasn't there an extra charge for those two extra bags?
No, there's not an extra charge for two extra bags. And most people, when they set extra bags out, it's because it's for, for yard trimmings, which typically doesn't attract the animals, but sometimes, you know, like if you forget to set your can out, and you have more stuff that'll fit, that'll fit in that can, it will go into an extra gr- trash bag, and you do face that threat of an animal getting into it.
I just, again, I'm gonna go back to what Councilmember Willie just said. I don't see how we fall behind on this without knowing until we realize that a, a new contract's potentially coming up, or maybe we did do some investigation on it and determined that we were behind based on the new budget we were approving, right, last month?
That's when I became aware of it, when we were looking at the budget and realized.
So here's, and I voiced the same concern last month. We have residents that are on fixed incomes, and very hard fixed incomes. And it, I know it's difficult with the increase of cost of this and that, and today. Could we not do a better job as a municipality in managing this more effectively than just carte blanche requesting a vote or a motion to pass this cost on to our citizens?
Well, the citizens end up paying for the cost one way or the other, through property taxes, because the city doesn't actually have any money to pay for us, things ourselves. It all comes from our tax, tax revenue.
Tax, yes, correct.
So solid waste generally is part of the enterprise fund, and is intended to be kind of self-supporting, so that's where the cost, that's where the, the, um, the recommendation comes from. And also from the standpoint of where our rates currently stand in comparison to others in the area.
And I want to circle back to one other comment you made, please, if I may. You talked about homeownership may change, and we don't know that the previous owner who had three cans, now there's a new owner with one can. Can we do our due diligence as a city, and when that request comes in to change the water buyer, purchaser trash for that? Can't we look and see that there were three cans associated with that?
Absolutely.
And make that in and not have to find out later and have lost revenue for half a year longer?
Yes.
I think we're not doing our due diligence well enough if we're not already doing that.
Well, and in some cases, also, people just find cans.
I understand that. I've seen that.
You know, so.
So basically, oh, go ahead.
So, moving forward, when a new contract, the, the obligation that, that we have as a city is moving forward when it's time for a new contract, that we negotiate the best potential contract we can for the citizens, and whatever that rate is, it is, but it is a. is a, uh, neutral, uh, in, in the budget. We're not making money off of it, but we shouldn't be in the hole either.
That's correct.
That's the goal, right?
And, and that's what I've done with these rates that we're done proposing as well. We're not making money, we're just not losing money anymore.
Yes, this definitely shouldn't be a profit center. I agree.
And when we adopt these rates, we're adopting them for until a new contract is in place? Is that right?
Yes, in a, in a, in a sense, you can, you can, you can adjust the rates anytime. And so when we go out and go out for bids for a new contract, if that contract is higher than we have to pay, than we're paying right now, then we're gonna have to raise the rates again. If it's less, you know, when I, when I amended a contract, when I, excuse me, when I went out for bids in Freeport and the contract came in like four dollars less, we lowered rates. We lowered our track rates. So that is, that is a possibility.
And what about, so we've talked about the Patterson Center and we've talked about, uh, solid waste, we haven't talked about water meter, nu- nu meter installs? Are those aligning, uh, with...
Those again are, are just covering our costs, um, for those meter fees and also for, with the, with the, um, deposits, that's money that we hold and when they leave, they get that money back, uh, assuming they pay their, they, they pay, they don't leave an outstanding balance.
And is that what the utility deposits, water deposit?
Yes, it's utility water deposits.
So I would think over the next few years, you're gonna get quite a few meters. Is there an opportunity to change? I mean, what if the price of meters goes up? What if, how does that work out?
Yeah, so this is...
Do you only adjust that with your yearly budget?
Yes, so when, when we're talking about the meter fees, when, when a new house gets built out in Cornerstone and we have to put in, well, actually Cornerstone's not a good example because of the fact that they actually, I think, cover that cost. Is that right, Gerald? Cornerstone actually...
We do not charge them a tax fee because they put in all the, uh...
They put the meters, but say...
...the cost of, of me, the meter plus a hundred dollars for, uh, installation.
So we have a new house that's built on an empty lot somewhere in town that requires a new meter tap and, and meter fee. So that cost covers the, the tap itself and the meter and that's, it, it basically just covers our cost. So it's a hundred dollars plus the cost of the meter.
So the only difference between a water meter at Cornerstone and a water meter over here on Mill Street is the meter's the meter, the tap is the difference.
Yes.
Counsel, any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item? I'll remind you that this is the second reading that we're discussing tonight. Tim, I appreciate you answering all the questions.
That's no problem.
I make a motion that we approve the second reading of the ordinance amending the master fee schedule for solid waste, utility deposits, new water meters, and the Patterson Center rentals.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Any no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item number fourteen, consider taking any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter ten, section ten, point zero two, point one six one, quote improvements. Hello, Ben?
Hey, Mayor. All right, this is a very easy one for you guys this time. Um, I was working with Tim, we have a potential fourteen lot subdivision coming in. They want to provide us a maintenance bond. When we reviewed the ordinance, we realized we only require it to last one year, which what a maintenance bond does is when they install the infrastructure, they give us a percentage of those fees to cover our costs if we have to improve any of those installations that may fail.
Basically insurance on the in- infrastructure that they've installed.
So the only difference that we're asking for is instead of it lasting one year, we want it to last two years, just to bri- provide us more surety.
And the reason for that is a lot of times there might be infrastructure that, that is installed for a development, um, but after a year, maybe a, a third of the development or twenty-five percent of the development is actually completed, so the infrastructure is not carrying the load that it was designed for. Two years gives us a little bit more of a cushion to make sure that there's not gonna be any problems down the road.
Staff have a recommendation on this, Ben?
Approval.
Understood. Counsel, any questions?
So like Bortega Street, the, the two years happens from when it was installed.
When it's, yeah, when it's installed and accepted and then you would hope that the development happens within that two years to where you actually start getting the flow through those lines.
Cornerstone is a great example. So when we accept the streets out there, there are streets that we've accepted that don't have any houses on them and may not in the first year.
And this potentially brings more value to us, is that correct? Is that fair?
This brings us more surety as far as, the development remained the same as far as what they're putting in the ground, um, as far as the standard of that, the design standard. This just provides more surety to the city as that development starts to actually develop vertically after the horizontal infrastructure, that we have a little bit more time to repair anything that may need to be repaired.
And this does not relieve the developer of meeting the required specifications for the underground infrastructure that they, okay?
No.
So...
It's the first reading, counsel?
It extends the warranty for an extra year.
I make a motion that we accept the first reading, uh, of ordinance amending chapter ten, section ten, point zero two, point one six one, improvements.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Any no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor, said, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item fifteen, consider taking any necessary action on rewarding a contract for code enforcement abas- abatement and cleanup services. Ben?
So we went out for a RFP to receive services to enter into a contract with a provider for properties that may need to be mowed, cleared of debris, or potential parts of buildings being torn down. We received three bids, but in an RFP they're required to be sealed. One of those bids was not sealed, so we could not accept that bid, so that leaves us with two. The first was Ohana Lawn Care and then the second was from Integrity Roofing. The bids that they proposed are vastly different, but in reviewing the bids, staff is recommending to approve Integrity Roofing for that service. And if you approve that tonight, what that contract will look like is it'll be a year contract and it will automatically renew unless they say that they would no longer like to move forward, or the city, within thirty days. They will receive a call from staff and they will have ten business days to abate the property and then after abatement, ten business days to send the bill. Because what happens in code enforcement, we have to send that bill on to the property owner. If the property owner doesn't respond within a certain amount of timeframe, then we actually have to put a lien on the property.
If, if the property gets into a situation where, let's say, for whatever company gets awarded the contract and that company has to go out and abate that property, is the city still hold responsibility for collecting that payment or does that payment collection now belong to the company that was awarded that to abate that?
It goes to the city.
Okay.
They will bill the city and the city will just forward that bill on to that homeowner.
Okay. So city will pay the abatement company and then if that homeowner doesn't pay, then we'll proceed with legal action to...
That's correct.
Okay.
They also maintain city property, some city properties as well?
We may ask them to do that, it's not part of the contract, but myself and Tim have discussed using them for those services.
Can, can you explain vastly different?
So as in the vastly different bids, it's just the type of bid we received. Integrity's proposing to do a work order structure and the other company is actually setting out a rate that they would do it depending what your violation is. The only concern that staff had with the other company is they have a few that have an invoice later that they don't specify what that fee is gonna be.
I'd just like to recognize that Integrity Roofing is a locally owned company as well, so...
They are local.
And then we'll, they'll give us, well, when we, when we send out the request to have the work done, they will give us a quote on what it's gonna, what they anticipate.
They'll provide the quote and then they will actually provide the invoice once it's done.
And that quote is gonna be based on the, the schedule of rates that they included in their contract. And they will only go out and abate properties that we direct them to, so don't want anything self-initiated.
Counsel, any other questions or, Ben?
I have a question. The hundred dollar per trailer load, the dump fee, is that a, a dump trailer that, that you all would own? Um, I make sure we're not stepping on our own foot here, um, by letting companies operate within the city, not using dumpsters, uh, provided by BBR, which is what we're contractually obligated to do. I'm not suggesting that the, to make sure we're not opening up a can of worms here. Um, one, because you can't rent a dumpster from them for anywhere close to a hundred dollars. Is that gonna be a potential issue?
Can I speak? Can I speak? So it's just, it's just our dump trailer we fill up and we take to the city. If you guys wanted to offset that cost, then there'd be no cost except maybe twenty bucks for the gas.
So this was, this is...
The dump fee for our trailer here in the city right now runs a seventy-seven, seventy. So that's why I said a hundred dollars to dump a trailer.
But, Councilmember Perry, if I could interject something, please? For example, I know, let's say when bland construction builds a home, they carry their own, personally owned dump trailer over there and fill it. In my opinion, this would be something similar...
Yes.
...to that if they have their own.
But this is...
I understand you're...
Is, is, is this the, this fee for vegetation you're dumping or if it's full of trash that you picked up?
If we're dumping, we have a dumpster at our office and if we're taking ten bags of bone clippings, we're gonna throw them in our dumpster. If I have a trailer full of, uh, uh, an awning that was there and a couch that was there, I need to dump that somewhere. That's what the dump fee's for.
And so they'll dump that in our, our dumpster delivery?
Correct, when there's time there, that's what we would do.
Okay.
And again, that fee covers twenty bucks in gas and basi- I mean, it's twenty, it's seventy-seven dollars.
I have a question, is yours, is yours a double actual?
It is.
Okay, so our rates went up to eighty-seven dollars from seventy-seven dollars?
Okay.
So...
I would still be okay with it. I mean, I just wanna cover the cost of what it takes to dump. Where you guys go bait that cost as your city, there's no reason to charge, but that's up to you guys.
No, we need to charge so that we can put it on the bill to the, no.
To the homeowner that's...
Homeowner, that's gonna pay.
Oh, I understand.
To the property owner.
I understand.
So we can pass that cost.
Yeah.
Not to increase the cost upon you all.
Right.
If you're selected, but to pass that cost on.
When do those new costs go into effect? Oh, that was this meeting today. Got you.
About twenty minutes ago?
Perfect. I bought my dump tickets today already, so perfect.
So any other questions on this agenda item or...
Um, if we, if we approved, if, if adjustments need to be made accordingly for that, do you have the authority to do that or are we locking them into these rates if I adopt it based off of...
You know, the rates here that the council adopts are not to exceed rates, so I probably have some ability to negotiate less.
I don't wanna hook you into a hundred dollars and then all of a sudden it costs you a hundred dollars.
Right.
Okay.
We really just wanna serve our community, to be honest with you.
We really want you to.
Thank you. Maybe don't make the money cover your costs. Yeah.
Counsel, retain action on this agenda item?
I'll make a motion that we award the contract for code enforcement abatement and cleanup services to Integrity Roofing and Construction LLC.
I'll second that.
A motion is second on the floor, is there any discussion? All in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. We need all the help we can get.
We're here to help. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank y'all.
Uh, agenda item number sixteen, consider taking any necessary action on a resolution to authorize the city manager to submit funding for a routine airport maintenance program, which is known as the ramp. Gerald, you taking that or Tim?
Sure.
Tim's been grilled pretty hard tonight, he's probably wants a relief.
So I've got to take a minute to go on.
Before I start, uh, about the, the resolution, let me tell you that we have completed the last years that ended up, uh, August thirty-first and we have been reimbursed by the City of Texas and that is a closed ramp. And, uh, the work that was done out there, the gentlemen that fly in and out of it have been very happy with it. Uh, I think what's happened over the last few years with the lighting, uh, the, uh, windsock project and the cu- uh, coating of the runway has, has been well received by everybody. So, um, thank you for that. Uh, the, uh, City of Texas last week approved the ramp grant for twenty-five, twenty-six. They actually call it just twenty-six. And so as soon as you approve it, I will tomorrow, hopefully maybe Wednesday, uh, do the application process and it's the same as it was the year before, which is they will reimburse the city up to a hundred thousand dollars and our matching is eleven thousand one hundred, eleven dollars and eleven cents.
Counsel, any questions for Gerald or Tim? Are you retaining action on this agenda item?
I move that we accept the staff's recommendation in approving the resolution of the city. Counsel, I have to reiterate, I'm correct?
The ramp?
No, I don't, okay. Uh, okay, so let me restart that, if that's okay. I move that we accept staff's recommendation in approving the resolution to authorize the city manager to submit funding for the routine airport maintenance program.
Thank you for that. I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Any no discussion, we'll vote all in favor, said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you, Gerald.
Yes, sir.
Agenda item number seventeen, consider taking any necessary action on utility rate study. Tim?
Um, so the water and sewer rates charged for, um, consumption are the primary source of revenue, obviously, for the enterprise fund. Um, and it's intended that those rates be sufficient to cover the cost of the operation and maintenance of the utilities. Um, currently, they're not, the budget to be passed, if you recall, draws about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fund balance, uh, to support this next year's budget. Um, the rate for last increase in twenty-twenty-three and costs have continued to increase. Um, before we actually consider raising rates, we're required to do a, a rate study, uh, have it done by an independent, third-party, uh, objective lead to determine what the rate schedule needs to be to sup- support our costs, um, of the utility. Um, one of the things that I also wanna look at is that most cities actually have a, a separate rate for residential versus non-residential utility rates. Um, and we use a single rate here in, in Mauckdale. Also, um, higher consumption will generate significantly higher, um, charges for consumption. So if somebody uses twenty thousand gallons, that, the gallons that they use between ten